This is one of the least professional councils I've ever seen. People have been called hood rat, snakes, they've been called B.I.T.C.H.s, been told, "Who the F you talking to? What's up, what's up, what's up?" And I'm gonna teach you how to be a lady. And so, no, I was a lady at birth and went to Etta, and you should try it.
Wow, sir.
And so, here we go, the demon seed is talking to me.
Be respectful towards your colleague.
Point of order, point of order.
Thank you. My name is A.C. Dumas, and I'm a resident, forty-five-year resident of the 3rd Ward. First, I want to tender my condolences to the family of Quincy Murphy. And I say that with respect that I've known Mr. Murphy in his advocacy for many, many years. And while we didn't agree politically, I never attacked him personally. I want to say that for the record. I gave, the news called me, and I gave them a public statement. And when I come up to this lectern or wherever I am, I speak truthful. I want to say that, couple of things, I want to talk about the 3rd Ward election. And I think that the clerk of the city, the clerk of the county are disenfranchising the vote of 3rd Ward residents.
Whoa.
I believe that. I think, and I feel within my heart, that it was politically motivated. Let me say something, I can get natural now. Mr. Jarrett said, he looked around and he said, "He's the oldest person that have attended this, in this council chambers." And I always say this, no one, no one in the city of Flint alive today have attended more council meetings than A.C. Dumas, other than Wilbur Papa Jigger. And that's on the record. So, you know, a lot of you all just come here, I've been here. Now, let me say about Hasselbring. First of all, Hasselbring is not a 1st Ward building. Hasselbring is just happened to be located in the 1st Ward. All of you have interest in a senior building that all of us pay taxes on. It's not just Elamene's building, it's all of you. I attend Hasselbring, and I've been attending Hasselbring.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have seven members present?
There are seven members present. Without objection, I'd like to take a moment of silence for our colleague Quincy Murphy. Thank you.
Automatic, Mr. President, you don't have to go vote for she to be in. That's the American way. If you don't, oh, excuse me, America, Ms. Lewis just made her arrival, like she always do. Like I say, Ms. Lewis, the people told me to say, "God don't like ugly," but he not too particular about pretty. You can check your hair on that. You say colored woman's hair don't blow in the wind. Hello? Dr. Lewis? Oh, okay. Yes.
You can just forget it. Forget it. Ooh. I'm bringing that garbage can to yous.
What's up, ma'am? Ma'am, your time is up.
You can bank it. Ma'am, your time is up.
No, my time ain't up. I had one minute and thirty-seven seconds left. I had one minute and thirty, I looked right up at the clock.
Ma'am, you walked away from the...
I am right.
Point of order.
I don't care about your point of order.
She wa-
I had one minute and thirty-seven seconds left.
Madam Chair, madam chair.
Yes.
She walked away from the lecture.
No, I went to get some paperwork to come back.
She walked away from the lecture.
I walked over to get some pa-
And she won't stop talking.
I walked over to get some paper and bring back here.
What's your point?
My point was, I walked over to get my paper.
Add that, that's not to you, Ms. Williams.
I had a minute and thirty-seven seconds left.
Mr. Pfeiffer, what was your point of order?
There's no rule of walking away during your time. That forfeits your time.
Point of order.
What's your point?
It's a rule that says that it's at the discretion of the chair.
That's correct. Okay. Next public speaking speaker, please.
And dang, I can't forget the last thing. I want to talk about legacy. When, um, I give my condolences on y'all council person that has passed on, but when you leave this earth, what is your legacy gonna be? We still fighting over Eric May's legacy today. You only had two people get up here out of about ten people say their condolences to this man. That speaks a lot. That speaks a lot. When you leave this earth, what are you gonna leave here? When you leave them seats, what are you gonna leave? What are people gonna say about you? If you wanted to run another seat, what are people gonna say about you? Will it be good about your legacy? Will it, will it be good? Eric May's so good, if one of his grandkids came up and ran for something, they'd get it just because Eric May's is their granddaddy. What is your legacy gonna be? Sooner or later, you got an answer to what you do. Whether it be here on earth or down there in hell, either way, you gonna have to answer for what you do. What is your legacy gonna be?
The next speaker is Beverly Biggs.
Hi, my name is Beverly Biggs. I'm in the 3rd Ward. I'm running for the 3rd Ward seat. I don't understand that you did a beautiful job for Quincy Murphy. Beautiful. You done wrapped the seat, you done did everything was supposed to be done. My condolences go out to his family. But when it came to Eric, you wouldn't even come to the funeral. You wouldn't do anything for Eric. You didn't even want a poster of his picture brought up here for Eric. And that's sad. And on the 3rd Ward, you want to stop our votes, you want to stop us from coming and getting the signatures, but I went out and I've knocked on doors, and people have told me they have voted for me. They have voted. And I'm taking it far as I can go, to court, to get this, make, get this stuff taken care of. You guys are wrong. Davina, you listening to Liddell? Liddell gonna send you to hell too.
Whoa.
She's gonna send you to hell too. And it's sad. You guys want to mess up a vote. Quincy passed away. That seat was, uh, the recall was done correctly. There was a recall. Seven hundred and seventy people signed that recall slip. Now, how you guys gonna say, "You want to appoint somebody?" I don't want to be appointed. I want to be elected in the seat. And I'm not gonna stop until, you guys are so corrupt. You are so corrupt, and you, you four know who you are, 'cause the five is gone. You four know who you are. You guys are so corrupt, even down to the mayor. And I ain't ashamed to say it. I was at a council, I was at the 6th Ward the other day. He told me I couldn't speak 'cause I wasn't in that ward. I'm still a resident of Flint. He, he's still the mayor of Flint. You cannot take and say who can talk and who can't talk. If you scared, get out the seat. And that's what it seemed like to me. He was scared of what I might have said. And all I was gonna say is why is trash cans at houses that are vacant? They're condemned. But they did trash cans at these houses. But he want us to take them to the backyard. I wish I would. I ain't taking nothing to the backyard. I didn't put it out there, and I'm not taking it back. You guys transferred today for trust for tomorrow. You guys are so crooked, crooked.
Thank you. Now, it's time for council response. Each council member will have two minutes in order to respond to the public. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank each and everyone who came here today. It is a sad and unfortunate day because we have lost two colleagues this year. This council did not start out, we have changed. We've got four different colleagues who are no longer with us. I hope that at some point, we can learn to put differences aside, to work together. But there are changes that are still coming. My deepest condolences to Councilman Quincy Murphy. My last conversation with him was about the $36,000 for involved dads, which is on our agenda, which I do support. We were moving that money around. It's, it's a lot going on in Flint, and it's a lot in this council.
I do want to take this opportunity to publicly extend my condolences to the family of our fallen colleague. I will certainly miss him tremendously. This is a blow to the council and to the city. His legacy is one of leading with his heart, is one of attacking and being tough on blight. It's one of following his own mind regardless to how anyone might have felt about it, whether we liked it or not. I think what's telling is when you have the opportunity to come and speak, if you have nothing nice to say, you shouldn't say it at all. That's what's telling. What's telling is how you're willing to be disrespectful to someone's memory simply because they didn't do what you liked. That's what's telling. What's even more telling is that you don't have the good sense that God gave you to be quiet and allow a family to mourn just because you didn't like a person. That's what's telling. Want to talk about what's even more telling? Go look at Dewey Park. That's what's telling. You want to talk about what's telling? Look at all of the industrial things that are happening around the 3rd Ward. That's what's telling. You want to talk about what's telling? Look at that man's legacy and how he helped improve the 3rd Ward. That is what's telling. That is what's telling. Thank you.
I also want to take my time to speak on Mr. The day after he died, he had community meetings scheduled, and I had, because we weren't sure exactly who was going to be there or who was going to present, I went to hold that for him because he would have wanted that to happen. The amount of information that I learned of what is going on in the 3rd Ward, invasive species of plants being removed and planted with native plants, the police and fire training academy, which we did know about, Ashley Capital, um, Sacred Heart Village for, for the veterans, and all the work that's being done for veterans in the city by Catholic charities, that's the worst. Was the house that tree was, was cut down, was that on the demolition list?
So, the, the house was abandoned. Okay? The, the house was abandoned next door. So, I, I'm telling you what the, the person's saying. I'll get Mr. Edwards the, um, the address.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Um, so, um, through you, Madam Chair, to the speaker. So, um, was that specific tree a part of the training program that the Conservation District was using?
So, what I'm stating is, what people stating, they've got tree problems, and if you have a tree problem, endorse somebody and you get your tree cut down for free, that's in the backyard, it is not a city tree. It's not leveling, lifting up anybody's sidewalk.
Point of order. So, we have our colleagues speaking to other colleagues' motives.
Uh, no, that's incorrect, 'cause I didn't state anybody's. That, that could have been in flushing. You don't know, don't do that. Can you warn her? She's taking my time, please.
The councilman of 6th Ward just said the tree was in the 1st Ward. We have a 1st Ward councilman here.
So, are you saying the 1st Ward councilman actually did that to somebody? 'Cause I didn't.
Yeah. You just said it was in the 1st Ward.
Did I state he did it?
All right, all right.
I did not, but if you want to, let's say yes, and the picture's on Facebook. Since you put it out there. Let me tell you this. We talk about decorum and the tone, the disrespectful tone with the point of order to Councilman Pfeiffer was rude. It was rude, and it was disrespectful. And as I head to the State of Appeals Court, that's one of the five, or the items that the five you voted to remove me on. But your tone in these chambers is disrespectful, a lack of decorum.
These ARPA funds are literally clearing, say, $32 million worth of debt for Flint residents. And then, when individuals state what their issue is about the, about the allocation of the fund and where it's coming from.
Point of order.
What's your point?
She is breaking Rule 43.21 when she's saying individuals what they're speaking to and voting. She is not breaking the, the rule that she has actually called everyone else out on. Please warn her.
Go ahead.
Speaking to our motives.
Thank you. And so, when our colleagues voice that they have a concern about setting dangerous precedents, we bring it back to the answers to the question. See, it is about being solutions-based, not trying to have aha moments. We're here to work for the residents. And passing this, um, yeah, Madam Chair, is someone yelling out over here. So, I just want to make sure that we're respectful, that we're respectful to them. So, if we have colleagues that are moving, and because I haven't seen any other resolutions or suggestions come from any other colleagues, so when you have colleagues that's working in the best interest of the community, it is unfortunate that we are, that we have colleagues that are finding reasons not to be in support.
Um, point of order.
What's your point?
You need to warn her by saying she's got colleagues who are not finding this or we're not supporting. She's not being factual, and she's gaslighting this community, and it needs to stop. She's breaking Robert Rule 43.21.
Go ahead, Ms., or Dr. Lewis.
Thank you. No, gaslighting means you acting like you care about something to somebody when you don't. That's gaslighting.
We go, I'm telling you.
And so, and, and so, what I'm not going to-
Point of order. Point of order.
Enough.
The person that was yelling out is actually sitting behind the person with the, um, video camera.
Give me my report.
Go ahead, she asked for it.
All right, you got it. You asked for it, you got it.
Gaslighting is acting like we're moving in the best interest of the residents, and when we have an opportunity to allocate $50,000 out of nine, almost 95 million, it is in question whether we should do so.
Nobody has brought forward anything, nothing. And that's sad because every one of us...
Point of order.
What's your point?
Can you warn the councilperson in 2nd Ward who's ordering a lawsuit? She's talking out loud. She needs to stop. She needs to stop. She, this is, this isn't her time to speak, as she tells the audience, you know, bringing you to order.
So, I'm going back to my question.
Thank you. So, I want to make the record clear because my colleagues have not been factual. I, and, and I, and I want you, I am supporting your program, but it is something that we have got to start as a council with losing two members, learn how to talk to people. That has to be done. I'm going to Michigan State of Appeals Court because five people didn't tell the truth. But your program is outside of that. And then, tonight, when they state, "Nobody has ever brought forth another from ARPA," it's not true. I did for $5 million, they declined. I did for $16 million, they declined. They declined it. So, to say that nobody was ever advocating in, for other use of ARPA funds-
Request for information.
What's your request?
So, when exactly did you submit that resolution?
So, we have asked for help in the community. It was voted no. As I stated, this might be a problem. You know, I don't like to be brawl, beaten down, gaslit, talked too disrespectfully, lack of decorum, and I don't know Reverend Monica, if you knew, I was even called a B.I.T.C.H. I've never cussed anybody, and this is by one of my colleagues, who was the president of the Flint City Council. And so, for me to sit here-
Request for information.
What's your request?
But does Pastor Monica know that you brought a gentleman to my home?
Okay, here we go. Now, if we warn her-
Go ahead.
Because that is, that is not, she's taking the floor.
Go ahead.
Let's talk about your food stamp.
Point of order. Madam Chair, the point is, the point is, we're on resolution. Point of order.
What's your point?
Well, for one, someone back here yelling, I don't know who that was.
It was me.
Okay, great. So, can you give her a warning?
Why would we give her a warning if she didn't get a warning?
You want a warning, you want a warning, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm just making sure that we are staying exclusively on the resolution at hand. And so, we need to be talking exclusively to-
Okay, point of order. She's taking the floor, Madam Chair.
Uh, no, no, no. This is, this is my point of, this is my point of order. This is my, this is my point of order. We must be germane. So, in being germane, we must make sure that we are talking exclusively to Resolution 240-
Point of order, germane, talking about somebody coming to your house.
Please do not interrupt a point of order. I will rule on it whether it's a valid or not. Go ahead. What's your point?
We are on Resolution 240457. We should not be talking about anything outside of the reallocation of ARPA funds for undue medical debt. No, no court hearings, no nothing, just that.
That is correct. Go ahead, keep going.
Okay, I'm gonna say, I have freedom of speech. Maybe y'all didn't know the Constitution or the First Amendment rights, but I do. And she need to get that face together. I am supporting yours, but when we have the president who lacks decorum of the Flint City Council, and I want you to get home with your baby, you have a beautiful baby.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to labor this any further, but there was, we did request to have $5 million and $16 million, and this council turned it down. But I'm, I don't want, I'm not a disgruntled, I understand how important that this is. But we have to have, we want to move on. Other colleagues have to learn to respect other colleagues. Even if we agree or disagree, you can have healthy debate without disagreeing, point of order, point of information, did you know? That needs to stop. I am supporting it regardless to the fact that, uh, the councilperson in the 1st, the 2nd Ward lacks decorum and wasn't true. They did not vote on the $16 million, the $5 million for the ARPA funds. I will be supporting this.
Thank you. That was, um, any other person in the last round?
So, has nothing to do with this, this program, this-
Request for information.
What's your request?
Does the colleague in the 8th Ward know that we have until December 31st to allocate the money, so therefore, we don't have enough, a big window to have people reapply?
Go ahead.
Like I said, well, then the money can go back because where I'm at is, this money is the reason why everything is escalating, why grocery prices are, are out of the world is because we printed money to allocate these, these dollars into ARPA. So, then send the money back to the government.
Go ahead.
See, colleagues draw firm lines in the sand. When we tried, when it was, when we were meeting in the dome, I was told, "I never worked with her. She is a devil." And then, we have councilmembers saying, "I don't even talk to her. I don't even work with her." So, how would you know what's happening when you draw a fine line in the sand that states you won't work with her? You won't listen to her. See, this is what Councilwoman of 7th Ward was talking about.
Point of order.
What's your point? Point, she is not being germane. She's not, and she needs to be germane. Drawing a line in the sand.
I am-
And, and let me finish my point of order, please. Thank you. She's not being germane to what the topic is. Not at all.
This is totally in line with it because we're talking about training and knowing when training is taking place. We were just told that she didn't know. We were just told, I mean, that, insinuated that she was interested in going to training. If you refuse to talk to your colleagues, how would you know? See, we, again, we draw these lines, as I was saying, and that's not doing anything besides hurting the residents. See, I don't hate you more than I love the residents. I want to see good for every single ward, but unfortunately, it looks like the same sentiment is not shared. Yes, it's important to stick to what we're talking about, and what we're talking about is professional development. Do you care enough about the seat that you were elected in to get some training and learn how to be a better councilperson? To learn how to make better rules?
Request for information.
What's your request?
So, you state, I think, I want to be clear, 'cause I'm not for sure of Judy, 'cause some was a lot of dialect. Was it you stated that one of your seminars was how to be professional, or was it, um, the councilmember in the 2nd Ward?
It was not me.
It wasn't you? Okay.
No, I went to the, I've seen me.
This what she learned at the, at the meeting? She needed to go back.
This is improper, you do-
That is improper.
And, again.
It was, you asked the question, I answered it, no follow-up.
And so, according to our council rules, which I encourage my colleagues to take a look at, your request for information is to help you with the next vote. That was not to help us with the next vote. So, when we abuse that, according to our council rules, people must be brought to order. My point is, monies are set aside for us to be better councilpeople so we can learn better policy, so we can see what other municipalities are doing, so we can make relationships to bring money into the city. That is what this money is here for. And if you don't want it, don't vote for it, that's fine. But we shall continue to do great things for this city from our seats. Thank you.
There's a lot going on up here today, actually. Have, have we asked them to come before council and tell us a little bit about their program?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Sean Hart came and spoke before the body this summer. He did. And that's how we found out more about the program, what they were doing, and he also had dads here to speak on behalf. This was during the, um, June through August time, I believe.
All right, all right. Calm down.
Thank you.
As a former finance chair, I would have thought that the colleague in the 9th, in the 6th Ward would have known that.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Can you, um, warn her by speaking to my motives? You, you need to-
She's, she's way out of pocket, and she's expressing that people are jealous. You, you need to correct her. Go ahead. Everybody jealous of Dubuque, Iowa.
Well, last time I checked, she keeps talking about Dubuque.
Okay, keep going.
We, we talked about the connections that we made in Dubuque. We talked about the, the connection with the EPA and other federal agencies that, um, the Vice President and myself have been, um, in contact with to bring resources and more grant money here. This is what we're talking about when we go to places like this.
Request for information. What's your request?
Um, for you to share. Who is she sharing this with? Because the other four haven't gotten any of that. We have, you haven't shared that with us.
No.
Who are you sharing it with? Is the question.
So, we are sharing, if you would like to know, Councilwoman Burns, you already said, "I'm dealing with you. I don't talk to you." So, obviously, you don't want to hear it. And when we begin to speak, you walk away.
Request for information.
What's your request?
So-
Um, um, point of order.
What's your point?
There's already some spirited debate happening up here. We do not need the audience to keep yelling out.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was in the request for information. Um, do you know, we would like to know, especially since we're still, if service lines haven't been completed. And I don't need the extra rhetoric. I would love to know. I don't know if you like doing a memo, a meeting. I would like to know what Mackinac Island had and what Dubuque, Dubuque, Iowa. Share that with us.
Well, as I was saying, as she walked out and threw her hand up, that we definitely will share that at the next council meeting. So we look forward to sharing that with the rest of the body, because it's all about leveling up, so we can give the people the best government that they deserve. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
This is one of the least professional councils I've ever seen. People have been called hood rat, snakes, they've been called B.I.T.C.H.s, been told, "Who the F you talking to, what's up, what's up, what's up?" And I'm gonna teach you how to be a lady. And so, no, I was a lady at birth and went to etiquette, you should try it. And so here we go, the demon seed is talking to me.
Be respectful towards her colleague.
Point of order, point of order.
And she's, and she's talking, I've got the floor.
You don't call people names.
She's over here talking to me.
I know you heard that. I know you heard that.
Stop, I am the chair.
Judy, the unwanted child, called me a demon seed.
I was just going-
Okay. I didn't call you not one name.
You shouldn't even be talking on that floor.
Not one name, not one name did you get called.
Point of order, she won't stop talking.
Not one name did you get called.
Do not, you must be respectful to each other, you do not-
To each other, I didn't call her not one name.
You do not-
Called me hood rat.
No, I, that was before, you talk about now. I didn't call you nothing right now, so try again. You see how you trying to act like, and I could have sworn- She, she's the one on camera calling me the hood rat, correct? Yeah.
I'm warning both of you.
It's on camera, so you're lying about something on camera.
Excuse me, you're out of order, Ms., Ms. Chat, and Ms., Ms. Burns, for, you're both getting warned.
I appeal the ruling of the chair, because I got the floor and you allowing this to go on.
I, I'm, I'm, I am, I, I just warned her.
I'm, and I'm appealing the ruling of the chair.
I gave, just gave out two warnings, which one are you, are you, um, are you feeling?
The one that you gave to me.
You did it at, but, you did it at the same time, so she's appealing both.
Excuse me, she doesn't have the floor.
But you gave warnings at the same time.
I gave both of them at the same time.
Yep, so she's appealing both of them.
Excuse, you, you don't get to speak, I got the floor. She doesn't get to speak for me.
Clarification, she said she's only appealing hers, so-
But you, you didn't say that, you gave the warning, you said I'm giving both warnings, that's, that was the same ruling, so she's appealing both.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Let's, let's go ahead and-
I'm only appealing my own, because she said it two different times.
You didn't give her a separate one, you said it at the same time.
Point of order.
It doesn't matter, come on, let's just go to it.
Thank you.
It's been moved and properly seconded to appeal Ms. Burns. Both warnings, okay.
Point of, no, point of order. I am not appealing hers, I'm not, I couldn't care less about her warning.
Point of order.
What's your point?
The chair gave both warnings at the same time in the same ruling.
I did.
Yes, she did.
I did, I said I'm giving you both warnings.
Yep, you sure did, therefore, she said I appeal, so she appeals both warnings.
Saying why I was giving both warnings.
Exactly, so she appealed both warnings.
You letting them run all over you, Judy, that's just not cool, that's, that's not.
All right, so this is, this been, um, moved and seconded to appeal the warning of the chair for both warnings. Ms. Burns, you're, made the appeal, you may speak, you have one minute.
So, when you talk about professionalism, you bring up that they call people bitches, they call people hood rats, they call people snakes, they sit in their wrong designated seats, and they try to intimidate people. They stand up and say, "Do you want to fight, what's up, or, or what you gonna do?" And then vote-
Point of order, point of order, point of order. This is, this is not germane to the appeal.
It is, we're talking about professional, you don't get to tell me, I give freedom of speech, understand our First Amendment rights.
She's talking during my point of order.
You're not done?
You need to-
You're, you're talking in my, in my appeal.
I've got it. Okay. You must stay germane to this appeal.
And I am, it's about being professional. Those, those items, I stated those things, Judy, when I was talking about professional services.
For calling somebody a demon. You got warned for calling somebody a demon.
You just said, "I gave you both the warning."
Because I was, as I was clarifying it-
Point of order, point of order.
I'm not gonna argue with you, this is the fact. This is the fact. You were both given warnings, as I went to say what ones each one of you got them for, you appealed the ruling of the chair.
You know, it's hard to sit in these seats when you can't get the basic respect. You just don't get it, and she's over there mouthing our President of the City Council, side eyeing and talking, she's been doing it all night, all night. Professional services means, and we were talking about these trips, because we're not, we're four-four, and we're unfortunately split, and then you guys are trying to browbeat people to, to do stuff. You know, it, 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 y'all, y'all too much, too much.
So I gave the warning because of lack of respect in calling her colleague a demon during this meeting. You do not call people demons, period. So this is the vote to overturn the ruling of the chair. If you want to overturn the ruling of the chair, vote yes. If you do not, vote no. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? The vote is six yes, one no? The vote is six yes, one no, the ruling of the chair is overturned.
But I was not given, and I spoke with the city clerk, that I did not get it. I simply did not get it. I had more problems with my email state, my laptop and email state, and we were also compromised in I.T. I did not receive it, did not receive it.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Do you, do you receive the M.L., M.M.L., a magazine, because it was also in there as well, so that's the paper copy?
Yep, that's all right.
Okay, so, you need to warn her for taking the floor, she's already said this five times. I didn't get it, I didn't get it, and I did ask the clerk, so I didn't get it. So, you, you can't make that happen, you, you want to be right. Let's move on, let's finish, finish up, you know?
Any other discussion in the second round?
This is crazy.
Hearing none, this is the vote.
Wait, turn to the second round?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, go ahead. So, I want to, because what happens is, um, the sixth ward council person has no relationship with the truth. Um, she's talking about she's always professional, she jumped over my back on more than one occasion trying to fight Eva Worthing. She called Eva Worthing all kind of cuss words, her and Eric Mays got into a back and forth saying, "F you," it's on camera. She act like, "Don't make her go get her folding chair," she said that several times. The only reason she piped down was because she had somebody who she knew she needed to pipe down with. Be clear, her behavior has been unbelievably disrespectful, she constantly meddles in other people's wards. All she does is discuss us when she's online. Not only that, that's, I'm calling you to order, stop it. All she does is discuss us when she's online, not only that, then she sits here, and she makes up all kind of things that have never happened, saying she's going to a court of appeals for stuff that is clearly on camera. That's another thing, it's like, how you can be delusional enough to say somebody lied to you, lied on you about stuff that's all on camera? Everything that I've just named is on camera. Yep, this is germane, because she said we're talking about professional services and said we were being unprofessional, and so now this is my rebuttal to her saying I was being unprofessional.
Well, if I say point of order, all talking should cease.
That's correct.
This is not germane to a thirty thousand dollar allocation, it's just not.
I'm gonna tell you why it is, because she sat here and named all of that stuff.
What's your point?
You have to rule on my, or on your decision, it's a point of order.
We're talking about professional services, which she opened the door for and you did not stop her from talking when she did it.
That's correct.
Alrighty, thank you. Sorry you don't want the rundown on how you all seem to only want to check us, but not check the people that you're okay with. And every time somebody tells the truth, she get up and she leaves her seat. Because she doesn't want the truth to be told on who she is and how she is. But the fact that she took some, she sent someone to a colleague's house.
Point of order.
She pulled up at the colleague's house with that person.
Point of order.
You see how she, and then she talk about people being rude, you see that? Madam Chair, it's not her job to tell me I need to stop talking.
Please stop.
That's your job, Madam Chair.
Uh, if, if you guys, if you guys would stop talking over each other and through each other, maybe I could answer. But neither one of you are, shut it up.
I wasn't even in here when she was talking, I never even mentioned no opening, Chair.
You said point of order four times, and she kept talking, and I heard your point of order and I couldn't get a word in. So, go ahead, what's your point?
Madam Chair, this is not germane to the topic. Could she please stay germane to the resolution? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to contend with the fact that she's talked the whole time and didn't stay germane either. I'm simply doing a rebuttal, you see how she cannot handle when somebody gives back to her what she gives? She literally starts stuff, then she has a whole problem, she keeps saying Dr. Lewis can't keep her face straight, but here she is, twisted in the eyes and the face while I'm trying to talk. That's amazing, you have a problem with someone doing it to you, but you turn around and do it. This is the thing, this is the thing, it's fair turn. Don't complain about what somebody else does in response to what you're doing. You started this. I've been sitting in this chair minding my business the whole night.
She's not being germane, Madam Chair.
Would you like to explain to her, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Point of order, the councilwoman in the seventh ward has a, has a hard time stopping talking when there's a point of order on the floor. Madam Chair, she needs a warning, because it's been five or six times.
There has been several warnings, I mean, point of orders, and you have spoken right through them. This, this is not your warning, but I'm, the next time, there will be one.
Okay. I do want to point out how they both keep using frivolous motions to take the floor. So let's be clear, since we're talking about warning, they're using privileged motions to take the floor, simply because as always, they'll tie your bus and can't take it when she gets it back. I was sitting here, everything was fine, she started name-calling, she started trying to point out stuff. So since we want to point out stuff, stay away from people's houses with strangers, because you're dangerous and you're poison to this city, that is a stalker move.
Point of order, she don't even, she live on hillside in the ninth ward, stay in your ward.
I'm sorry babe, I don't live on no hillside in a ninth ward, that's fine, and for, go ahead.
This is ridiculous.
Go ahead.
Re, request for information.
This is crazy.
Did you try to pull up at her house too, is that how you know?
A point of order, y'all just-
That's invalid, that's invalid point.
Yep.
My point, has my point of order been recognized?
I am recognized, interrupted.
We fallen off the rails, Madam Chair.
Yes, we are.
We fell off the rails because she started it.
Please, we're not gonna, this, we are adults.
We are in a point of order.
What is your point?
The councilwoman in the seventh ward just said that, she, she just said some derogatory things that, a warning was called earlier, but now it's okay.
May I continue, Madam Chair, because Stretch Armstrong here is trying to make it work for her and it's not.
Miss Mashat?
That's not derogatory, that's not derogatory, that's not derogatory.
That was inappropriate.
That's not inappropriate, they're literally sitting here interrupting my time, she was talking on my time.
Point of order.
She was talking on my time.
That is your time.
But they were talking on my time as my time was going.
Ms. Burns, I did send you the invitation, by the way, that was sent to us on June seventeenth regarding the Michigan Municipal League Convention.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I, 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 I think, I would hope that you get the, the me, the rest of the meeting in order, because, um, wow. Wow, and, and it's clear as day, some council members have freedom of speech and some don't. Because it, every person watching this realizes that what was just said, Ms. Burns got a warning. But when the councilwoman, the seventh ward says it, it's, oh, next time, I'm gonna give you a warning. Madam Chair, I ask that you, I ask that you chair fairly. And if somebody's out of line, then they're out of line, but chair fairly. This, back to what this resolution is about, um, they must had a big trip planned, because they are mad.
Um, point of order.
Please, what's your point?
Uh, the point is, that's speaking to someone's motives, no one was mad about that. It's just if you're sitting here minding your business, somebody starts calling you names.
That, that, that was beyond the point of order, I ruled on that. Stretch Armstrong. Go ahead, keep going, Mr., Mr. Pfeiffer.
I can be called Stretch Armstrong, but I can't say they had a big trip. And this is why we are divided councils. And this is why, um, I will be voting no on this. Because at no point during the last two trips that any council member took, has it improved relations on this council. None, if anything, uh, people lost their First Amendment rights, we can no longer speak. Uh, members of the audience and, and paying residents, tax-paying residents can no longer speak, they get thrown out. So tell me how, so tell me how these trips benefit anyone in the city. If anything, people are losing rights daily because of these meetings. People are getting arrested for having a damn camera. So, tell me how Dubuque, Iowa helped this council, I'll be waiting.
Any other discussion in the second-
But, uh, Mr. Pfeiffer, I mean, how would you know what was said in Dubuque when you took a two-month vacation from your seat?
Point of order, point of order.
Uh, no, wait a minute, excuse me, Madam Chair.
I have a point of order, all talking must stop.
What's your point?
My point of order is, number one, she's not germane, and she's speaking to his motive, she doesn't know if it was a trip or what.
I'm speaking to his attendance record.
Ms. Burns, I had already called her on that before you said point of order.
Thank you.
There's nothing to call me on, because according to the attendance, we didn't see our esteemed council member from June fifth until he returned back in August. So there's no point of order, there's no life to that. We just check your attendance or, or your vacation pictures, because you were not here. And so-
She doesn't know if it was a medical issue, or, she doesn't know, she's speaking to the improper motives, and she's not being factual, and she's not germane, Madam Chair.
That was not a mo, that was not a motive.
Madam Chair, I'm speaking to individuals from the eighth ward emailing me saying that their council person not being responsible. I'm speaking to, that seat was empty for two months.
What's your point?
What does any of this have to do with-
It doesn't have anything to do with-
It does, it does.
Hearing none, this is the vote to send resolution 2402452 to council. Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett? Mr. Alamin? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley? Yes.
As you can see, Madam Chair, she's putting her camera up trying to talk to me, and I'm just sitting there.
No, she keeps giving me a grimace look, not true.
Not even looking at her.
Ladies, ladies. Ladies, we're in the middle of a recall, roll call.
I'm, I'm fine, I'm listening, and I'm, and I'm talking, I'm talking to, listening to Councilman Pfeiffer, I don't know what she's talking about.
The camera is clearly-
Candace, you keep, you, she keeps doing this. Is it, is it a rule that I can't have my camera on?
You know she's being antagonistic.
Excuse, is there a rule? Because I want people to see what you're doing.
You see she's being antagonistic.
No, I'm not doing your craziness. I'm not doing it.
Let's, we're in the middle of a roll call. Go ahead.
Stop that crazy.
Madam Chair.
Please stop recording colleagues from the dias.
First of all, I'm not recording, please tell her to-
And then she's calling names.
Videography goes in the back. Go ahead, keep going, we're in the middle of roll call.
Point of order, point of order.
What's your point?
I'm telling you, she's creating an antagonistic environment, that she's literally sitting down here harassing me. And you're trying to act like it's both of us having a problem here.
Black Lives Matters, Ms. Priestley.
Um, excuse, point of order, RL, I'm bringing you to order.
RL, quiet.
Point of order, I should not have to sit through childish behavior from my colleague.
There is a, if, if there are videographies, there are videos being taken, you have to go in the back. Go ahead, what's your point?
It's not a rule, it says a tripod.
Point of order.
We're in the middle of a roll call, ladies and gentlemen.
No, no, we're not gonna make that that simple, because if I'm telling you there's a problem occurring.
It is a problem.
Here, let, let me show you, I have not taken a picture of-
She hasn't, but the video's up, the only reason she didn't was because I said something, Judy.
Look on my-
I don't have to lie, Judy.
What, do you see any pictures or any video? So she's lying.
Seeing how I don't know how your phone works, I can't tell that, I don't know how to-
Do you see, this would be my memory, it's an iPhone, do you see anything in there? You do not, nothing, video, let me go to video.
Point of order.
What's your-
She literally just said to you, is there a rule against her doing it, she admitted she's doing it, then she comes down there to tell you she's not.
She's a liar, she's a liar.
We're not, we're not videoing anybody up here. Go ahead, we're in the middle of a roll call. Continue the roll call, please guys, grow up.
Who are you telling to grow up, because I'm literally sitting in my seat not bothering anybody?
Everybody. Come on, and let's finish this roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Judy, RL keeps yelling out.
RL.
Point of order, he already been brought to war, to order, that should be his first warning.
If I have to tell you one more, it's, you're warned, this is your warning, RL, you've been doing it all night, it's done.
Madam Chair.
What?
I appealed the ruling of the chair.
We're in the middle of a roll call vote.
We're in the middle of a roll call.
Yeah, we can do it, we can, I'm talking to Madam Chair, not you, you're not chairing.
We're in the middle of a roll call vote.
Stop, guys. Go ahead, Ms. Burns.